Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. The time is 6:30. This is the regular council meeting for October 27th. Clerk, can you please do a roll call?
Mayor Portemblis.
I'm here.
Councilman Fleming.
Here.
Councilman Amir.
Here.
Councilor Rabeck.
Here.
Councilman Soltis. Councilor Wright.
Here.
Mayor Greystein.
I'm here. Can I please get a motion to excuse Councilman Soltis? He did give notice.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I make a motion to excuse Councilman Soltis.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. The invocation and pledge this evening will be led by me. I invite you to stand if you would like. People are often unreasonable and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you are honest, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have, and it may never be enough. Give your best anyway.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First up this evening, we have the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions this evening?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I'd like to make an addition to the agenda to, under reports, item 8A for the recommendation of special workers' counsel regarding the litigation in the matter of Spangler versus Madison Heights.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. Are there any other additions or deletions? All right. Seeing none, we're going to move on to presentations. This evening, we're going to award the Citizens Academy certificates of completion.
So the Citizens Academy participants are here tonight from the 2025 Academy. These participants spent time learning about the operations of the city over the course of like 12 weeks, or eight weeks. They visited every department in the city, and it is ending tonight by watching the council meeting and receiving their certificates of completion. So I thank everybody for showing up and taking the time to do that. And with that, I'll turn over to the mayor.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out and for coming to these academies. I went to them a few years ago when they first started. I was already on council, but I still found it very beneficial to go to them. So first up, we have Patty Koyfus Smith.
We're going to take a photo of everybody when you're finished.
All right. So I'm not going to shake your hand. Kathy Khan. Jennifer Dobie. Kristi Elliott. Laura Gorteski. Carrie Hooker. Lisa Mallett. No? Not here. All right. Lourdes. Sorry. Lourdes.
Anita.
No. Thank you for coming out. Richard. Margaret. And Jared. All right. And then I also have Tyler. Xena. Ashley. Erin. All right. Rashid. And then Olivia. Okay. Is there anyone who came, who got a certificate, who didn't get called? No. All right. Awesome. Well, I want to thank you all for coming out, and I want to thank City Manager Marsh for hosting this. This is a really great opportunity to learn more about the city. I know that I would have found it very useful for me if I had known this before I came onto council, but being able to go to some of the events after I was on council was still very helpful. And you can always learn more. That's why I always try and get to a few of them, even though I'm on council. So I think that we're going to try and get a picture with everyone.
Yes, that's the idea.
How do you want us to do this? So if you have your certificate, you can bring it. All right. Next up, we have, for public hearings, this is the city planner, the alley vacation request, PEE 25-01.
So this request was postponed until tonight, but staff is recommending that it be postponed one more time until November the 10th because we just received a requested traffic study. But the Community and Economic Development Department has received a request to vacate the 17-foot-wide improved alley right-of-way located between 601 West 12 Mile and 28767 Dartmouth Road. The alley also provides access to property at 611 West 12 Mile Road. At the council meeting of October 13th, City Council postponed action on this item pending the results of an ongoing traffic study. Staff currently recommends further postponement of this item until November the 10th. This recommendation ensures that the council processes all the details necessary for an informed decision. The additional time is critical as it will allow staff to complete the following actions: fully review the traffic analysis, meet with the Road Commission of Oakland County, and prepare a complete recommendation for council's consideration. Therefore, staff recommends that a motion to postpone the alley vacation request, PEE 2501, for a 17-foot-wide alley between 601 West 12 Mile Road and 28767 Dartmouth Street, to November the 10th, 2025 City Council meeting.
All right. Thank you. Can I get a motion from council to postpone, please?
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to postpone the alley vacation request, PEE 25-01.
To November 10th?
To November 10th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, I'll support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. This will be postponed until our next meeting, November 10th. Next up, we have meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity for the public to speak. I ask that you go to the podium, speak into the microphone, give your name, address, affiliation with the city, address your comments to me, and keep it to three minutes, please. And with that, it's open to the public.
Well, good evening. I'm Kathy Sapia, a 50-year resident. I guess this is a season to say a voter and a homeowner of the residential neighborhood of Dartmouth, Carum Drive, and Bel Air Streets. We were supposed to get a vote on the Dartmouth Alley access problem today, but as you know, it has been delayed until you get more traffic data. Well, on your table, I would like to give you a visual representation of my traffic data that I obtained while I sat in Tim Horton's parking lot. This is ground zero for all this traffic congestion. Here's the facts. On the first page, the bottom line is, for one hour from 5:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., I counted a total of 226 car interactions. Page two, bottom line, for one hour from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m., I counted a total of 200 car interactions. And on the third page, it shows just how one car can have a possible five interactions in that congested traffic zone. This Dartmouth Alley access proposal will add another access point to this already congested traffic zone. Let's be clear. The residents in the neighborhood understand that there's a traffic, a lot of traffic due to the traffic light on the north end of the street. We aren't asking to barricade Dartmouth or give us blue tags so our cars can go on the street and use the street. All the slashes on my diagrams represent resident cars. They are supposed to use the street. We just don't want additional cars on our street due to rezoning for commercial use. We can easily project a daily minimum of 170 additional cars. If this proposal is passed, you are essentially making the expanded Dartmouth Alley a two-way Michigan left for the nature property. Are you, the city council, really going to give away public property and zoning for a private purpose? We don't need a Disneyland alley with trees and flowers. We don't need a Disney, and we certainly don't need Dartmouth to become a Michigan left for that property's use, whatever is on it. Let's not lose what should be the focus: the people, the neighborhood, and the effect the additional traffic will have on them. And it's not the same 10 people. At the November 10th, at the November 10th meeting, we will present a petition to the council stating no to this project. Believe me, it's way more than the same 10 people. These are all signed petitioners, and this will be filled up in another two weeks. There will be more than ever the same 10 people to voice their opinion here. The bottom line, on November 10, vote no on the Dartmouth Alley access project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening?
Martha Covert, Edward Avenue. First, I want to thank my friend Catherine for helping me compile this. Last time I spoke to council, it was about the charter being broken. I received an email from Jeffrey Sherman saying that due to the First Amendment, that the voting through the police department, the FOP, was sanctioned. While that would be true if it was a membership vote, it was not a membership vote. It was a proxy vote, not covered under the First Amendment. Therefore, we have a violation of our charter. I don't, I know people are mad, and they sent me messages and everything. I'm sorry, you guys. These are facts. These are things that happen that need to be addressed. Excuse me. So, Mr. Sherman, I would ask that you and Jeffrey look into that to make sure that I was being told correctly, but the FOP themselves said it was not a membership vote. It was a proxy vote. Let's see. Now we have the two policies that were broken by Mr. Wright that this council never addressed, never. People lost their jobs for making remarks about Charlie Kirk because they broke a policy. He breaks two, and you guys sit silent. But yet, when you go to vote on how much money we should pay if we put out too much garbage, we should let you do that? Fine us, but not one of your own? You guys, this is wrong, and it's, you need to do something about it. You can't sit here and do nothing all the time. Your own people do things, and you won't hold them accountable, but you want us to be truthful and honest? Well, here it is, truthful and honest, and you ignore it like it means nothing. And I'm ashamed of a bunch of you.
Is there anyone else who has anything they'd like to say, just public comment?
Timothy Gensler, 28757 Dartmouth. My property is next door to the proposed alley development over there, the teardown. Like, I've got a big thing here, but I'm going to wait to talk about this, but I would like to just oppose the alley, knowing that my electricity comes from that alley, public site. If you prioritize it, you know, what happens to me? Do they run it in a different direction? Does it go down my property line? Does it devalue my property? There's a bunch of ordinance here that are, basically, it's like the house of cards now. If you approve this, you're setting a precedent to basically set the domino effect, man. I got a list of ordinances here that are going to be broken if you do that. Then what I'm going to read right here is this one right here. "The proposed egress, which require a Michigan left to travel north on Dartmouth, will further create bottlenecks, increase noise and pollution, and add to the neighborhood frustration. Currently, there is no commercial vehicle access permitted on Dartmouth, yet the proposed plan would introduce delivery, garbage, and service trucks at all hours. This raises safety concerns and quality of life concerns. I urge the city council to review the Madison Heights nuisance law, the nuisance ordinance, as its impacts, as the impacts described, clearly meet the criteria for a nuisance." Again, you're setting that precedent. You're setting that first car down. You know, it's going to just keep going down the line here, breaking ordinances for commercial use, and the Madison Heights residents don't deserve that. We came here with, you know, good faith, good intentions, to live in our neighborhood safely, and once you allow commercial development into a neighborhood development, you know, you're setting precedent for it could happen to you, and how would you like it? Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Anyone else who wants to speak? Okay.
Hi. Chris Webster, 28747 Dartmouth. Tim and Kathy's neighbor. From previous meetings, I've seen that the house can't be torn down unless it's zoned for parking. I can't see use for more parking. They have 167 spaces and a park-and-ride right next door. So it feels like it should be squashed on that alone. That's all I got.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? All right. Seeing no one else, I'm going to close public comment. And we are going to move on to the agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. We have four items. We have, from the Environmental Citizens Committee, a recommendation to remove a member. From the Director of Public Services, we have emergency purchase of a fire station to plumbing repairs, as well as Civic Center Park, Banshell, landscaping. And then we have the regular meeting minutes from the October 13th council meeting, if I can get a motion to approve.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support?
Your Honor, support.
All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, just a quick comment with the landscaping around the Banshell. If we can ensure that there are some trees that are a part of that to provide some shade, some of those summer concerts got a little rough for some folks without any shade over in that Banshell area. So that would be awesome. That's it, Your Honor. Thanks.
Any other discussion, comments? All right. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. Then we have two reports. We have, first, from the Human Resources Director, resolution to opt out of PA 152.
Public Act 152, as amended, limits the amount that public employers pay towards employee medical benefits beginning January 1st, 2026. City Council is required to make an election for its choice of compliance for the subsequent calendar year. Given that all the city's collective bargaining agreements approved by City Council provide for 10% employee premium sharing, council is requested to adopt a resolution to opt out of Public Act 152 as allowable under the statute.
All right. Thank you. Can I please get a motion from council to approve?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council approves the opt-out of PA 152 as it is allowable under the statute.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. And then we have 8A, the addition that we put regarding special counsel. Can I get a motion for that, please?
Your Honor.
Yes.
I move that council adopts the recommendation of Special Workers' Compensation Council regarding the litigation in the matter of Spangler versus Madison Heights.
All right. Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, all support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If there's no, motion carries. And then finally, from the city clerk, ordinance 2208, precinct boundary and polling location changes. This is the first reading.
Ordinance 2208 adjusts the city's election precinct boundary descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers. This action is critical for us to comply with state law, accommodate new voting practices, and realize significant long-term savings. The need for these adjustments stems directly from the state-level reapportionment following the 2020 decennial census. Since 2022, the boundaries for several elected offices, including U.S. House, State Senate, State House, and County Commissioner districts, have shifted. Specifically, the city of Madison Heights has been impacted by legal challenges to the state maps resulting in new legislative boundaries. The revised Michigan House districts took effect in 2024, and our new State Senate District 10 will take effect in 2026. Because every voting precinct in Madison Heights has been impacted by these changes, the clerk's office is required to mail updated voter registration cards to all registered voters. In addition to these mandatory boundary changes, recent updates to Michigan election law now allow us the flexibility to restructure. Due to the expansion of early voting and no-reason absentee voting, the allowable size for active registered voter precinct has increased significantly from 2,999 to 4,999. This presents an opportunity for long-term fiscal planning. The state of Michigan will require local governments to replace our current election equipment in fiscal year 2027-28 as the equipment reaches the end of its service life. Local governments have been advised to budget approximately $15,000 for new equipment per in-person precinct. Therefore, consolidating our precincts will drastically result in substantial long-term cost savings to the city. Based on changes in voting patterns, updated legislation, and fiscal considerations, the city clerk and the election commission recommended reducing the number of precincts from nine to seven. The city charter requires a precinct boundary changes to be adopted via ordinance. The deadline for making these updates must be submitted to the state of Michigan by January 6, 2026, to be effective for August 2026 election. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance 2208, amending precinct boundary descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers on the first reading, and schedule a second reading for the November 10th meeting.
All right. Thank you. Can I please get a motion from council to read through?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2208, amending precinct boundaries, descriptions, polling locations, and precinct numbers on first reading, and schedule a second reading on November 10th, 2025.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor, support.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Your Honor, so this is probably the most interesting item that is on the agenda for everybody here tonight. Very uninteresting council meeting, generally speaking. No conflict, no challenges. We didn't buy anything expensive, and so everybody from the Citizens Academy coming in to watch it. This is probably the one that impacts the most people. And it basically, it eliminates one precinct in the south end of the city, and then, I think that's one of the additional that voted Wilkinson, correct, to the clerk? And then it eliminates Edmondson Elementary as a voting location. And then it consolidates so multiple precincts are voting at John Page, just like has always been done with Wilkinson down in the south end, to further consolidate. So there would be five voting locations and seven voting precincts after this change. I don't know if we can put the map up on the screen or anything that's in here, but it's really interesting. I'm very supportive of the consolidation. I think voting habits have definitely changed over time. You have a higher propensity of people doing absentee and early voting, which is reducing those lines. Even in a November election, we're not seeing the kind of lines and waits that we were even, you know, pre-pandemic. And so I'm very supportive of this. I think my only question to the clerk is why the library is staying an independent voting location. Judging from the map, it seems like either the McCann Center could also vote at the library, or the library could also vote at the McCann Center, doing the same kind of thing as done by John Page and Wilkinson. There's probably a very good reason for it, but I wanted to ask the question on the record.
Well, the only reason for that is because the locations at the library and the location at McCann are smaller in scale. So unless the school district would be willing to let us use the gym for all those elections, we wouldn't be able to utilize the McCann Center for the combined precinct. And the same here. Our room is smaller than compared to the middle school, both middle schools.
Okay.
It's more of a capacity issue.
That makes sense. I know the library has always been our smallest precinct because it's really just one neighborhood. The map looks really large, but... just one neighborhood, the map looks really large, but it's all predominantly industrial, you have one neighborhood, some condos, and then a couple apartment complexes.
The problem with the, the, the City Hall Library precinct is that it encompasses a lot of apartment complexes, so it actually has a large number of registered voters in it, even though we don't have a high turnout for those. So, I have to go by the registered voters' number rather than the turnout.
In, in the, the gap between now and the final vote on second reading, if we could see about reaching out to McCann Center, or potentially the logistics of doing the voting precinct at the active adult center rooms instead of the library, that would help us to further consolidate.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm sure help with efficiency. If it's not possible, I'm fully supportive of this as is, but...
Well, it doesn't hurt to ask.
Doesn't hurt to ask, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions, comments?
Your Honor.
Yes.
Just to, to go along with Mayor Protem Bliss, the, also eliminates the Simons precinct as well, so, less traffic in our elementary schools, the better, so it does eliminate both of those and have them at the junior high that are a little bit more pleased, so... That's it, thank you.
Thank you, any, anyone else? All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No, motion carries, and with that, I invite closing comments, starting with Councilman Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, I appreciate the public comments this evening, look forward to more information on the well-documented traffic study, as well as what, what the R.C.O.C. might have for some recommendations on how we can alleviate some of that traffic and not add to it, so I look forward to seeing that report before we vote next meeting. Also, it's Halloween on Friday, so please watch, if you're out driving, please be careful, all the little ghosts and goblins will be out collecting goodies, so, that's about it, Your Honor, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. So, we have a, we have an official birthday coming up here at the city soon. We do have a birthday at the table today, though, so first highlight, Councilman Fleming, happy birthday.
We're listening.
And not far off, our city's official birthday is coming up on December 6th. Now, we have kind of two different birthdays, we have our incorporation vote, where the vote was to become a city, that was January 17, 1955, but the charter approval that made us a city, taking us as part, away from Royal Oak Township and making Madison Heights its own city, was December 6, 1955. And so, before that date hits, on the night of our Christmas tree lighting, there is a council meeting after that at our old time, which is an hour later than this new time, starting at 7:30, the Historical Commission, we're going to be presenting the 12 moments that made us over those 70 years, and so we'll highlight 12 moments in our history that really brought us to who we are as a city today. And leading up to that, one of our commission members, Kevin Wright, has been doing a phenomenal job on our Facebook page, the Madison Heights Historical Commission, find us on there, he's been sharing a ton of really good information that you wouldn't find anywhere else, like, for example, nearly 11 years before we became a city, there was an effort to incorporate this area in June 1944. There were more than 100 signatures filed, but the proposal was rejected by the county the next year. What's interesting about that, besides the fact that it was tried and failed and it took 11 years for us to do it again and become a city, but if it actually had gone through, the proposed name was Victory City. We wouldn't be Madison Heights, we'd be Victory City. And so, there's, there's a lot of really great information, prohibition raids was a post, you don't think about it, but we had some farmland all over in what is now Madison Heights, and there, there were a lot of, a lot of moonshine operations going down. I'd encourage you to, to follow that page and then to come out the night of the tree lighting. We'll have a very short thing at the tree lighting itself, but we'll have a longer presentation in council chambers with each of those 12 moments, and we'll have t-shirts for sale, commemorative 70th anniversary t-shirts, all of the proceeds support our historical museum and the preservation efforts that we're undergoing for a lot of the old pictures and newspapers, things that, once they are lost, they are lost for good. And so, we've got a lot of work that we're doing to try to catalog and digitize as much of that as possible, and so, you buy a t-shirt, that'll help us do that. So, hope to see you out, it'll be a good time, and follow the Facebook page, you'll definitely learn something. That's it, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Your Honor. First thing I want to just say is, I know there's some folks out there, some of our residents who are impacted by the government shutdown, I know there's some folks who get SNAP benefits, I just want to remind you that there are a few pantries in Madison Heights, first being the Madison Heights Food Pantry, located at 1529, I would recommend you kind of touch base with them and reach out to them for those folks who are impacted by the shutdown and potentially might see a loss of SNAP benefits as the shutdown continues, if it continues. There's also Gleaners on 13 Mile, which is another source, so, check those places out. And for the, the rest of the folks who are not impacted, just remember that there are a lot of employees in the area who work for TacCom and Warren, who are federal employees that we don't know, because they might work from home, or they might work in downtown Detroit, and you didn't know that they worked at the federal building, you know, keep them in mind, but if you don't work in one of those places, you can donate to the food pantry, and you can also have things for Halloween to pass out, like chips and granola bars and things like that for folks, instead of giving the traditional candy, particularly when chocolate is so high in price right now, so, I mean, it is. So, keep that in mind for our, our folks, and that's how we can address community. The other thing I wanted to kind of talk about is, obviously you guys know there's like eight days left in this election here, and there's just a lot of words being thrown out. They don't have to be true, they don't have to be accurate, they're just words, so, I just want to remind us all to remember, like, to no peace, no love, no joy, no community, it doesn't come from tearing each other down, it comes from building each other up, building up the community. So, let's remember to be kind and not feed into the fodder of just putting out fear, let's feed into each other and do what's right for everyone. And with that, remember to be kind. How are you?
Mr. Sherman?
Nothing this evening, thank you, Your Honor.
Senator Marsh?
Nothing today.
Can you go to the Clerk's office?
Yes. I just want to remind everybody that early voting is going on right now for the November 4th election at the Royal Oak Senior Center. The hours are 8:30 to 4:30 every day, except for this Thursday, when the hours are from noon to 8 o'clock. You also have the ability to get absentee ballot from the Clerk's office, you can come in and visit us and get one, or go online and apply for one. The Clerk's office will be open this Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for election business only, and all voting locations will be open on election day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Counselor Roba?
I just want to say congratulations to Citizens Academy graduates, thank you so much for being interested in the city and how it all works, and just stepping in and to learn. I think that is very, it's, it's a wonderful thing, and I wish we could all do more of that in many parts of our lives, but I really appreciate that you have stepped up to do that here in our city. I want to say thank you to Kathy for her diligence and her reporting, it's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort, and I appreciate that you continue to bring things forward for us to consider and to look at. And I also want to say to Kevin Wright and the Historical Commission, I am, I'm a big nerd, and I love that all of the, the historical things that have been put up on the social media in the last few weeks, it's been, it's fascinating, and, you know, I am ashamed to say I have yet to be to the, the rooms downstairs, the historical, what do we call them? The museum? The museum, the historical rooms, the museum downstairs in City Hall, I have yet to be down there, but those, those posts have been, make me going, oh, I love a museum, why haven't I done it yet? So I need to go down and look at it. So thank you to everybody that is working on that, especially Kevin for his work on that. And also, I just want to remind everybody to, we've been talking about voting precincts changing and things like that, so, so if you go to your, you're not going to go to a new precinct this time, you're going to go to your current precinct, or vote absentee, vote early, and just make sure you vote. Thanks.
Counselman Fleming?
So, the Historical Commission, you know, we have a commission here that runs basically the historical rooms, but also, we need a lot of volunteers. I mean, we, we have events that happen where the historical rooms are open on the weekend, and we can use the volunteers, you may not be on the commission, but we really appreciate all the help that we can get maintaining it, making sure that it can be open to the public. One of the things that people may not know is that the, the city had a motto, that was the city of progress, and about a year ago, that motto had changed, there was a group of people that were working on the, on the logo and the motto of the city, and I think, if I'm not mistaken, it's now creating communities, and that's what it is. And it took, that was, I know several people that were, a lot of people were working on it, there were some surveys that were sent out, and so, it's, it's no longer the city of progress, even though that, I think that we all here on this, on this city council try to make sure that we're progressing the city and doing things that are, like, making sure we have AI policies that are going forward in, in the future, and also working on, you know, the roads and everything else like that to make things much better. So, the topic of Dartmouth, I live very close to the Dartmouth area with 12 Mile, I live in the downtown area, and that is a street that I use almost every single day to go somewhere. And I would say that that intersection is very dangerous. I'm not going to go into a big, you know, rant on, about why it's dangerous, but I do know that, that I'm surprised there aren't more accidents happening there at 12 Mile in Dartmouth than there are, you know, happening every single day. And I did not know that it was, you could not take a commercial truck down Dartmouth, so, that's something that I, I'm not sure if there's a sign there or not, I have not looked, but I'd like to really know what our definition of a commercial truck is, maybe our attorney could talk about that in the next meeting at 10. But it's, it's really important, because, I mean, if we have trucks that are not supposed to be going down there, it is a very narrow street in Dartmouth, and with the parking, you know, that's allowed there, it's sometimes hard to maneuver, even the vehicles going both directions. So, I personally, I'm a person of safety, I want to make sure that our roads are safe, and I want to make sure that we're not adding into any traffic that's going to cause more chaos at, right after the, the diamond there, the highway, where people are even getting used to that traffic there. So, that's, that's where I stand on that. Also, we are coming up with, talking about AI, which is basically to me automated processes that we as humans, we kind of make things happen automatically to save time for different tasks, tasks that we have there for work and whatnot. And so, I'm glad that we're, the ITech is coming up with a policy, there was an article in the CNG, you can read about it, everything is going on, we have a information technology committee that's working on it, and I think that we should have some policies there to make sure that, you know, AI is not going, you know, going, you know, bonkers and making changes, or that it shouldn't be, and making sure that we don't use outside AI that we don't control, that we make sure that all, that it still has a human act, in part, a human interface with all the, all the things that we're going to be doing with the AI. So, that's just a topic I want to talk about tonight.
All right, thank you, thank you. So, just to sort of go off a few things that Councilman Fleming said, yeah, we, every time anybody in the city ever wanted to do something, and I myself did this, you know, 15 years ago, when I was talking to the city about bringing in the Hen ordinance, and we always, you know, finish, people always finish and say things like, well, you really should do this, you are the city of progress, we are the city of progress, and I think that that just, it's a term that's really just been taken so out of context, and everyone uses it for their own means, and so, it was changed a few years ago. But, you know, we still have it, city of progress, we haven't changed our, all our logos, and, you know, things change, and that is part of progress, is changing, you know, we used to have dirt roads, and then we paved the roads, and all these kinds of things, people used to have horses, and then they used to have, you know, the cars, when I, I remember hearing stories about cities that were so concerned about having these cars, they're horseless carriages, how is that going to work? So, people are often afraid of change, but it's how we grow, is we change. With respect to Mrs. Covert's comments about violating our charter, unfortunately, council and really staff has limited time on what they can do, and I feel like over the last few years, there's a lot of things that have gone on where it's been conversations with staff about these kinds of things, that it, it comes down to, we only have so many people who can work on things, and we ask everyone to be accountable, and it's very much an honor system, and if people aren't going to be accountable, there's only so much that can get done, and if you want to get things done, you need to just kind of move past it, and there have been many times that I have just had to move past things, and, you know, the way I was treated, things that happened, things I didn't necessarily agree with, but I needed to move on so that we could get done what needed to get done. And it's just part of working together, and, I mean, if you, if you would like to continue looking at these things, by all means, you are welcome to continue addressing council on this, if it's specific council members, by all means, you're welcome to continue addressing them as well. And I can't really speak to the legalities of it, I just know that at any given time, our attorneys are always battling different things, and there's just a lot of things that are going on like that, and we have to make a decision where we're putting in efforts, and it's not always what people want to hear. With respect to Dartmouth, Ms. Sapien, you have spent a lot of time doing all this, and I commend you for all the work that you are doing, and I, I wish you did Citizens Academy, because part of the reason that we ask people to do Citizens Academy is that they can look at the different boards and commissions, and I would love it if you would take a look at our different boards and commissions and maybe see about, you obviously, you have a very logical mind, and you have a big heart, and you care about the city, and you care about your area, I would love for you to take a look at our different boards and commissions and find one where you can help, I don't know if that would be planning or zoning or what, but I really appreciate all the work that you have put into this. Dartmouth is really busy, I mean, that Tim Hortons is really busy, that gas station, if there are, and I can't imagine having the trucks, like a large truck on that street, and if they're not allowed to be there, and this is why we're not voting on it, we're not delaying this for the sake of delaying it, we're waiting till we get the traffic study. Your, your work has been great, but there are engineers who, this is their job doing it, you know, but if, if trucks need to get to that spot, they're going to need to come in off of 12 Mile, it sounds like, but that's something that, you know, we need to look at all these, all these issues, and we need to figure out what is best for everyone. There are certain things that the property owner can do by right, without permission from the city, they need, you know, we can't, we can't vote on it to say yes or to say no, as long as they pull their permits and do specific things, there's, they can do it. And what we are trying to do here is to work with them, with the residents, to come up with something that everyone is happy with. So, with that, I invite everybody to come back to our next meeting, which will be November 10th at 6:30, the time is 7:16, and this meeting is adjourned. Good night.